Now, all you gotta do is put that into practice. If you see a girl in need, you better get right in there. Yes! Yes! A girl in need... Or... Crow and Reen. Oh yeah. Can we ship that? Bet we can.
It was the middle of June. With summer well underway, a rainy spell seemed to hang over Trista. With our field study wrapped up, the other members of Class 7 and I returned to normal school life. But just when we thought we'd gotten used to the challenging lessons and the breakneck workload, a moment of dread washed over us, making our blood run cold.
As you all know, tomorrow marks the start of your midterm exams. I'm no good with all these papers and essays and circling answers, so I won't really be able to help you much. But I'm administering some of your tests, so I'll be cheering you on from the sidelines. Make me proud, class!
Sometimes I lie awake at night and wonder how you became our teacher.
As I recall, aren't you in danger of a lecture by the vice-principal if our performance isn't up to par?
Oooh, I'm not too worried about that. Most of you tend to get pretty high grades anyway. I can hardly wait to see how well you all do. Remember, the results will be announced next Wednesday. Your scores we posted on the board by rank, so you can see how you compare it to the other classes in your year.
Oh, the sooner this week is over, the better.
I can almost taste the tedium.
I'm not gonna let Emma squeak by me again this time.
Hehehe. Oh, one more thing. They're gonna stick the average score for each class up there on the board, too.
Our class averages?
I suppose their intent is to furnish us with motivation in the form of class bragging rights.
Well, I do enjoy a challenge. Anyway, I know it's only noonish, but I think that's enough homeroom for today. You guys can stay here and study, or just head on back to your dorms. Up to you. Prez, if you'll do the honors?
Yes, instructor. Stand! Bow!
Jeez, what should I do? I could stand to bone up on just about everything, honestly, but my biggest worry right now is math. I wouldn't mind doing a few study sessions with you if you think it would help. I need to review math anyway. I'm not sure how much time I'll be able to spare, though.
You mean it? That'd be a huge help!
My biggest weak spot is Erebonian history, I guess. I doubt that comes as a huge surprise to anyone. I think I understand all the material we've gone over directly in class, but there are some finer points. I can aid you with that, if you'd like. Though, in return, I'd appreciate a fresh pair of eyes to help revise my military science essay.
It'd be my pleasure. Would you like to study with me, Fee?
I guess so. Oh, would you two mind if I jumped in, too? I could use a little refresher on my classics.
Does this leave me alone with Laura?
I don't remember, but I hope so. Of course, you're more than welcome. Would you like to join us, Laura?
No! No!
No, I... I appreciate your invitation, but I'll have to pass this time. There's a subject I need to review in private. I'll see you all later. Huh, what's up with her? Hmm... Maybe I'm just reading too much into it, but I could've sworn I saw her looking over at Fee. Hey, Reen? Eh, what is it? You heading back to the dorms? You're totally welcome to come study with us if you want. Hmm, I wasn't planning on heading straight back. I might come and join you guys in a bit, though. Or a bit later. Alright then. Perhaps we'll see you later.
Ah, my dreams of getting special, alone study time with Laura... Crushed and decimated. Brutally. There's always tomorrow.
The day before the exams is a free day. Talking to certain characters will allow you to study with them. When you run out of bonding points, the time of day will change to evening and the main story will advance. Oh, are the two of you studying military science? Looks like you guys are tearing through things, too. Ha, more or less. You caught us just as we reached the section on military symbols. Care to join us? Sure, couldn't hurt. I didn't know a thing about military science until we entered the academy, so I'm not feeling terribly confident. It's not as though most schools teach military minutia alongside literature and math. We're all in the same boat here. By the way, we'd be happy to have another person to paddle. Have a seat. Then let us begin. Map-marking symbols are used to represent an assortment of different units and formations. This is the symbol for infantry. Reen, try to draw the symbol for headquarters from memory. Gotcha, I'm pretty sure it's this. Guys, think you can draw the symbol for an armored troop?
Sure, this should be it.
Now, I have a tough one for you. What does this symbol mean? Hmm... That's engineer, right? You got it. Whew, there's so much to memorize for this class, and the fact that we're going in blind makes it even worse. These seem like raw basics, too. Given that not all of us will end up involved with military, it does seem a little excessive. But bear in mind that our military science class is to teach us how to deal with harsh situations efficiently. In that sense, there's plenty to learn even if we never find ourselves on a battlefield. That's probably why it's mandatory. If it could save our lives, we owe it to ourselves to do well.
Ha, agreed.
Oh, so this is where you are. Wow, when you guys study, you two don't mess around.
Ahahaha. Well, no better motivator than Fee, right? Our exams start tomorrow, and we've got to know our orbital science. I wanna make sure I study as much as I possibly can before then.
There's no such thing as too prepared. Besides, this is our last chance to get a full day of studying in. How about it, Reen? Up for one last marathon study session?
Sure, I'll join you guys for a while. Orbital science isn't quite my forte, anyway.
In that case, let's get started with the basics.
Sounds good to me. I thought they were gonna study math! Remember when they were in the classroom? Didn't they say they were gonna study math? This isn't math. I know math, because I'm bad at it. It has numbers... And additions... And subtractions. And this is not math. This is science.
So, orbital energy is generated by septium, right? And it differs from other types of energy in that it replenishes itself over time. It's hard to imagine what life would be like without it. Orbital energies in everything: lighting, railways, telephones, battle ordnance. That segues nicely into our next topic. Let's talk about battle ordnance. The first key feature is their portability. The second is their ability to synchronize with their user, allowing them to easily use orbital arts - magic for the everyman. Feature three is their flexibility. A battle ohrman's capabilities can change dramatically based on the courts within.
Haha, that summary wouldn't have been more perfect if we read it out of the textbook. That's Armachius. I can't believe you could rattle off all that without even stopping to think.
But if you already have the basics down, are you just trying to help me instead of focusing on what you really need to study? No, it's not that. Reciting the information I've learned like this helps it stick in my memory. Ahem, it might look flashy, but this is really productive studying for me, too. Well, everyone needs a method. As I said earlier, it's not possible to be too prepared. And while we still have a lot of ground to cover in our orbital science review, I would appreciate it if you would help me study for a few others when we're done.
Ahahaha, of course!
I'd be happy to. Really? Well, thanks.
Are the two of you going over Erebonian history? Wait, Erebonian history is what... Ga- uh, Gaius wanted to learn. None of this makes sense! They're all out of order!
I can't memorize things like this, because it's all pointless.
Fee, that seems a little harsh. Oh, I know. Why don't you join us, Reen? I'm sure it would make studying more enjoyable for Fee, too. That sounds like a good idea to me. The exam's going to be focused on the War of the Lions, right?
That's right. Shall we start from the beginning, then? After that, Dracul gathered soldiers in the North Highlands. And in the year 952 of the Septium calendar, he liberated the capital, bringing the war to an end.
Excellent, well done, Fee. I guess it stuck. Hehe. Incidentally, the war came to an end in July of that year, which is next month, so that's easy to remember. They say it was raining in Heimdall that day, but legend has it that the monument - or that the moment Emperor Dracul stepped into the city, the rain stopped.
Huh, that's neat. Yeah, that seems like a story that'll stick in my memory. You're a pretty good teacher, aren't you? Well, I'm always using tricks like these to help me remember things. If you're having fun while you study, it makes it that much easier for the material to stick in your memory.
Interesting, so that's your method. Well, if you can do it, we can do it too, right?
So, we finish this stuff off, then? Please. Oh, hi, Reen. How goes the studying? Ahaha, I suppose it's probably fine. But these are going to be my first midterms ever, so I'm more than a little nervous. Ah, first years, how innocent. It doesn't help that military academies have a lot of subjects, other schools don't, but you'll get used to it. That's true. Combat studies and military science, to name them, too. Oh, and you're going to want to make sure that you're ready for the political economics exam, too. Why's that? Well, it's Mustache Man's subject. That's not a very nice thing to call Vice Principal Heinrich, Angie. He does seem like the type to ride a ridiculously hard exam.
Oh, I know. How about I give you a hand studying for it, if you're free at least?
Are you sure? Of course, you're always helping me out, right? Hehe, political economics is Toa's strongest subject. You wouldn't want to pass this up. Why political economics as a first-year student in essentially high school? Like, that's such a college-level course. Political... Economics. Not economics, not politics, political economics. It's just like an advanced-level course, it feels like.
Well, if you're offering, I'd really appreciate it.
I sure am. Let's get started, then. Thus, Reen and Toa's study session began. Most of the stuff I was unsure about makes a lot more sense now.
Yep, that's good to hear. Hmm, we should probably go over some current affairs, too. For an exam?
Yeah, the vice-principal has the habit of putting questions based on recent news into his exams. This year, hmm... Maybe we should go over some recently enacted laws? Yeah, that sounds like the kind of thing he'd put in there. Just so most people could be caught off-guard, get it wrong and get lectured at... Lectured at for being indifferent about society. I'd rather avoid that. Recent laws, recent laws, recent laws. Oh, the Financial Transition Act from last year is one of the best-known, I suppose. It requires you to inform prospective buyers of the risks when selling them stocks or securities. A number of people have suffered massive losses buying shares lately, so it was past to keep people informed. Hmm, so that's the history behind the Financial Transition - Transition - Tran- Bah, the Financial Transactions Act. Then there's Imperial Transaction Act, which... Uh, then there's Imperial Transportation Act, which determines the rules of the road for drivers. That was last year, too. There are more and more people buying cars lately, nobles and commoners, but car accidents were getting out of hand. And that was especially true in Heimdall, which is why that law was enacted there first. I'll have to try to remember that. And then there's the Provisional Taxation Act, which impacted just about every providence you could think of. In other words, a fancy name for the much-revolved tax increases. Reviled, uh, whatever. They're being enacted in the provinces, most doubling land and business taxes. You've probably at least heard about them. I have, yeah. It seems like a pretty major topic back in Celtic. If he's going to set a question about a recent law, it's probably going to be about one of these three. Hopefully, that'll be some help, at least. Even if none of them come up, you really helped me out. I'm feeling a lot more confident now. Thank you both for all of your help.
Ah, I can't - I didn't do anything at all. I'm just hanging out. If there's anything else you want to know, let me know. I'd be happy to help.
Thanks, I will.
Hey there, Reen, what's up? Hold on, let me guess, you were studying away nice and diligently when your orbital lamp suddenly went out. Swing and a miss. You two seem pretty relaxed despite how close the midterms are getting.
Who do you think you're talking to? I know better than anyone that it's pointless to start studying this late in the game. How's that working out for you?
It was actually pretty good when it comes to the practical stuff. Survival skills, first aid, all those kinds of things.
Really?
See, all stuff you don't need to study for. But if you're feeling shaky about any of it, I'm happy to teach you a thing or two.
Sure, I'll take you up on that. Wait, you're serious? The idea of Crow teaching anyone anything is a little unnerving. Were you just joking?
Nah, it's cool. Might as well show you the ropes. Cool if we borrow a chair, too, George?
Go for it. And so Crow passed all of his knowledge on to Reen. That about sums up what they'll be testing you first years on. You should probably make sure you've got CPR down, too. I do actually need to brush up on that. Do you think it'll come up? It's only one of the most basic things anyone would expect out of a Thor student, so it wouldn't hurt to know. Right, here's how it goes. If you find someone who's collapsed, first up is checking whether or not they're conscious. If they're unconscious, it's safe to assume that they're in trouble. Next, you're going to want to shout for help. You're not going to want to try and handle this on your own. Got it? The more people you have helping out, the better chances are to survive. That makes sense. Next up is making sure they're breathing. If they aren't, or something's weird about the way they are, it's CPR time. This basically involves giving them a repeated combination of chest compressions and rescue breaths. You need to keep this up until their pulse and breathing return, got it? Don't give up until the very end.
Wait, 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 wait a minute. Wait, wait. Crow? I think... This needs to be a hand-to-do on-course. Can you, like, lay down on the table and pretend like you're unconscious so that Reen can, you know, move in and give you some rescue breaths? Rawr. Oh yeah. True romance. I mean, uh, anyway. Understood. You don't seem like the kind of person I could count on in a jam. I guess George is right about him being good at practical stuff. Now, all you gotta do is put that into practice. If you see a girl in need, you better get right in there. When she wakes up and sees you've saved her life, instant fireworks. Your hands and lips are in the right spots already. Every time I think anything positive about you, you go and say something like that. Oh, well, this was useful, though. Thanks for taking the time to teach me. Good luck, my son. Go out there and get some good grades for me. Ahahaha.
Oh, instructor, were you checking out the old schoolhouse? Yep, just a quick peek inside, though. You'll be pleased to know there don't seem to have been any major changes since last month. I'm totally fine with that. At least that means we can just focus on studying for our midterms, then. I really would like to know, though, what's going on with this building? Well, whether we ever find out or not, all depends on your investigations. Well, I think you guys are edging closer to whatever that truth may be. And you almost seem ready to start using combat links at a more advanced level, too. What advanced level? You mean there's more? Oh, your Arctis unit still has plenty of little tricks and features hidden away. The greater the awareness of your link partner, the more effective your combat link will be. But don't take my word for it. Try it out during your next investigation. Um, sure? I don't really know what she's trying to get at. Oh, are you two studying? Wait, wait! Didn't Alicia say she was gonna study with Fee and Emma, and Laura was gonna go off and study on her own? Which was going to be my opportunity to find her for the true, true romance. No offense, Crow. No offense. No offense. That's the secret romance. Laura is the true romance. Anyway, this is like, none of this stuff matches up with the cutscene earlier. Who broke this, anyway? Uh, Lisa probably met up with Laura because she was worried about her. Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sure that's what it was. I'm sure it has nothing to do with the fact that they're already programmed to have these two sitting here at some other points in the game, 'cause I've already seen them sitting here like this. I'm sure it has nothing to do with that. Yeah, we both figured we had a lot of art to brush up on. It's probably not our most important subject in the grand scheme of things, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. I've never had to deal with a series of exams right in a row like this. Laziness could very well be tantamount to failure. Would you like to join us, Reen?
Of course I would. Laura's there. I mean, yes.
I'd love to. The exam's supposed to be focused on the basics of illustration, right? You got it. Let's get started. How about you ask the first question, Reen?
Sure.
Okay, first question. Alisa, what is a dessin? Isn't that the little point that goes in between numbers? A dessin point? I think it's a drawing that makes use of monochrome lines of bearing heaviness to highlight the way light hits a subject. Oh my god, did people study this? In high school? I didn't study anything like that in high - I never even heard of dessin. I was making a joke, obviously. I've never heard of that. Did people stu - did you guys study this kind of stuff in high school? Holy crap! You think correctly. So, Laura, what exactly is a sketch? See, that is a question much more in line with what I would have expected. A sketch? A rough drawing? A sketch portrays the subject roughly with very little in the way of detail. I suppose it can be likened to an early first draft of a drawing. That's right, sketches and dessins are basically two sides of the same coin, since both are used to start a painting. The big difference is that dessins usually take some time to finish, whereas sketches are pretty quick. But there's a method that's even quicker and more basic than sketching. Any ideas, Laura? There is? Hmm, that would be... Crocoi? I believe? I thought that was a breakfast. Like a sausage crocoi? Don't they sell those at Burger King? I'm so - I don't - art - art, like... Wow, this is way over my head. You two know your stuff, but maybe that just means we should be using harder questions to study with. Hmm, let me see if I can find some. Hey, Reen, if you want, I can ask the next set of questions. It's hardly effective studying if you don't get to answer any questions yourself. It's okay, don't worry about it. Just give me a minute here and I'll find you a really good one. Well, if you insist. Ah, maybe we should've expected this. He really is a kind-hearted person. Oh, it's already time to head home. I didn't even realize because of the rain. I guess I should get ready to head back to the dorms.
Excuse me? I do apologize for stopping you on a rainy day like this. Do you know if this is the building in which I might find the principal's office?
Oh, yeah, you're in the right place. His office is in the east wing, first floor. The receptionist might have gone home already, but I can show you the way if you'd like.
Hehehe, thank you for your kindness. But I couldn't possibly trouble you more than I have already. I'll be able to find the way, I'm sure. Well then, if you'll excuse me, Master Reen.
Ooh, she knows his name already. Also, can I just say really quick while I'm talking, anyway? The voice acting in this game is actually pretty solid. I really like her voice particularly, but I like a lot of the characters' voices. Hmm...
Wait a minute.
That took you way too long to realize.
How does she know who I am?
Reen?
Ah, hey there, Alisa. Heading back to the dorm?
Yep, I and the others are staying a little longer to cram a little more. But I figured I'm not gonna learn much more today, so I might as well call it a night and start prepping for tomorrow.
Right, right. Um, well, you're going my way, so what do you say we head back together?
Sure, okay. Hey, it's not often the two of us get to walk back to the dorms together, is it?
Hehe, well, eh, at least I got something good out of this downpour.
Is there even a filter between your brain and your mouth?
Nah, no need for that between friends. But you're in good company. My sister's asked me that before, too.
She must be a saint to have put up with you all these years. Anyway, how do you think you did on the exams?
Not sure. I gave it the best I've got. Still, I've got that nagging feeling I could've hit the books a little harder.
Wait, timeout. Did we already take the exam? Really? I missed that part.
Hehehe.
I wish I was as smart as you. Back when we took the entrance exam, only Emma and Machius scored higher than you, right?
You just came in a little higher than me, too. Back home, I usually came in near the top in exams. I guess that goes to show that Erebonia has no shortage of smart people.
No doubt about that. Bookworms pour in here from all corners of the Empire. You said you're from Ruur, right? Coming out on top in a city that size is still pretty impressive.
I suppose, though that was just at the Sunday School level. Uh... Aren't you curious about, you know, my family and stuff?
You mean the mysterious Alisa R, agent of national intrigue? Well, yeah, of course I am. But you probably have good reasons for keeping it under wraps, so I don't want to pry.
It's not that major or anything. Especially compared to what you and Feeve told us about yourselves.
I've never really thought my family circumstances were a big deal. Though Feeve's past sure came as a surprise. I wonder now, when I look at her, what her life in a yegor corn must have been like.
It seems like Instructor Sarah knows more about her pasts than we do. Back at the entrance ceremony, I got the impression they'd met before.
Same. Oh, speaking of weird meetings, I ran into someone kind of strange earlier.
Oh?
Yeah, I was talking to her just before you called to me.
Reen told Alisa about the woman in the maidenhood.
A maid who knew your name? This isn't the part where it turns out she knows you because you've tried to hit on her in town before, is it?
Heh, as if an upstanding guy like me could pull off the Casanova act. She seemed a couple years older than us. Maybe twenty or so?
A maid in her early twenties?
Hmm? Something wrong?
No, no, just thinking. There's no way it could really have been her. There's no way it could really have been her. Mother keeps her far too busy to find the time to come here. Ahem! Uh, anyway, maybe the upper-class dorm has a new hire starting out or something? Though that wouldn't explain how she knew your name. Maybe you're just more popular than you let on.
It's only...